Nine twenty twenty four alphabetical roll call who's here?
Clark Brewer here.
I'm Callahan here.
Amy Glassmore here.
Kevin Hein present.
Okay, and we're also joined by Cassandra Thayer, town planner, and Carolyn Murray, our town council.
Um, Amy has her hand up.
I would uh. Well, I would request that after we finish the business of the town as it is listed in the agenda. I would like to continue or at least be informed in a more formal way about what you were talking about when I was trying to get myself out of five different um Zoom meetings. Thank you.
No worries. Um, all we have on the agenda tonight is a set of minutes and we have a re-advertised public hearing that we do have to start from scratch. So Cassandra, without further ado, if you would read the public notice, please?
Yes. Pursuant to MGL, chapter forty A and three hundred dash five point four of the Cohasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight five three four three nine seven two zero one five. Passcode nine seven four six four four on Wednesday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four at six thirty PM. For a large house plan review for property known as lot A four seventy Black Horse Lane Cohasset, Mass zero two zero two five. The application is for large house plan review for a single family home with a total residential gross floor area or GFA of six thousand seven hundred fourteen square feet. The application is submitted by Stephen Callahan of Twelve Bay Ave, Duxbury, Massachusetts, zero two three three two. This public hearing is re-advertized for an application filed with the town clerk on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and initially reviewed in a now expired public hearing that opened on April tenth, twenty twenty four and continued through April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four thirty PM, and Friday, eight AM to twelve PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting Cohasset MA dot org slash five two four slash active PV applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated.
Okay, thank you. All right, so um uh, just for the record, Mr. Callahan and I are not related. And perhaps in the gene pool of thousands of years ago in the old country, but um Mr. Callie, we're gonna have to start this from scratch. So if you could, you or your your team um do just a quick overall presentation, reorient ourselves as what you're doing. And then I know some newer materials have been submitted, so you can explain those as well. So you have the floor.
Record Steve Callahan, the applicant, Twelve Bay Ave, Duxbury. Uh, Cassandra is uh, do you see Dick Rock? Mark went in the uh, he he's prepared to walk you through the plans as we did before and um there were the two issues that we did a little homework on that we're gonna report on, but it sounds like you'd like Dick to start from scratch.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of have to because it's a re-advertised hearing and so, you know, you can do a briefer version than the first time, but uh we do have to just go through the overview of the whole thing. So, Mr. Rockwood.
There you go, I'm muted. Um, so I should pull up my screen. Uh, let's see, I did this last time. Share. There you go. Share screen. Stack broadcast. Is that coming up?
Uh, no, we don't see a shared screen.
Okay, screen. Share screen. Stack broadcast. Everything on your screen including. Um, it should be coming up. Don't know why.
Something's happening.
Just takes a while.
Sure, yes, it says I'm sharing my screen.
Mr. Rockwood, we can see everything that you're seeing. So I think if you just automatically go to whatever plans or materials you're looking to show, we should be able to.
Click on the PDF or whatever.
Here's my OneDrive. Is that coming up?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Sorry. Uh, this is the lot. If you want to go back and uh do the house plans, this was all about the height where we had a question.
Well, yeah, if you don't mind, since it's.
Just take me a minute, I gotta go back.
The overview of the whole.
There in other folders. Uh, okay, site plan. So here's the site plan of the existing structure. That's there. Existing barn, and there was an existing greenhouse on the side of the barn. And what we're adding is this area in the middle here, which is a two-car garage and pretty much a breezeway connector section with stairs. Um, that that we're adding on to the barn. Um, we are sort of on the edge of a floodplain and all that stuff's worked out. We have the driveway, all the pervious and impervious calculations are in Greg Morse's plan. Um, so it, do you want to see the architecturals? Yeah, sure. Those, yep. Um, this is the architecturals of the project here, so. This is the original barn. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. Um, and then what we're adding is this garage on the front. And then we're uh making the greenhouse into a, you know, heated uh space, sort of a pool house. A little cross section through the garage as it as it looks at the barn. And uh, there's a full straight on as you come down the driveway. Uh, actually, this one's more as you come down the driveway towards it. And this is the back end on the water side, which we're not really adding anything on to. It's more on the front side that we're adding on to. Uh, these, this is all the existing size and everything that you see from the water side. And um floor plan wise, um, to have it in scale, it's uh, this is the original barn here in the middle. Um, and then we're adding the garage, which is a section here that I showed you. And those are the elevations. Shall I go back to the site plan?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So this is uh Greg Morse's site plan. Once again, there's the barn and there's the garage in Breezeway. I just keep pulling up what I'm pointing at in the middle. The garage and the breezeway and the little porch that we're adding. Uh, this is the driveway area here, coming down the driveway. And when we left off last time, there were two remaining questions. Uh, as Greg Morse stated on his plan, we're under thirty-five feet. And the board asked that I show a representation of the exact height that we are uh calculating it going around, which I did, and I'll show you that in a minute. And there are four lanterns coming down the driveway. Um, which are marked on the plan here, you know, this, these little lantern markers there. And the question was, what were we putting for lighting as a light fixture? Um, the first one that we showed uh had a little too much uh dispersion of light, so we have something that's more of a downlight. So those were the two remaining issues as we left off the last meeting. The um calculations for the barn, uh, this was the site plan. You know, in the bylaws, it, you have to search for it, but then it tells you how to, what the board wants to see as far as the going around the building in twelve locations. So I did that. This marks the locations where they pretty logically made sense. They're fairly equal. And those calculations, uh, I'm showing where they're located here. And then this, and this is what I had turned, and then these calculations are the heights. So our average height of the roof is thirty-two point thirty-two feet, four inches.
I'm I'm not.
Yes.
On the side that faces the water, it looks like. Cut out.
The highest point from the lowest spot of the grade where one of the doors open to un- to the ridge is thirty-seven feet. That's the highest.
You're supposed to measure from pre-construction grade, not finished grade.
We're not changing the grade.
Not?
No, not in the back. We're not changing the grade at all. There's, there's the building as it sits in the back. Retaining walls, gray, that's the lowest spot on the property right there. And that vertically from that ground to the peak measured thirty-seven feet. So when you take the average going around the rest of the building, because there's a lot of footprint on the building, it averaged thirty-two feet. Because I'm, all I'm doing is taking not the average of the roofs, the average of the highest roof. So that highest point taken from all the other points of the grade comes out to be thirty-two point four feet.
Tom, uh, Amy has her hand up.
I can't, I can't see that. Um.
That's why I told you.
That's good. Thank you. Uh, all right. Are you finished? Well, let me just make sure. Is the applicant finished with your presentation? Then I'll turn it over.
If you have any questions on this, and then I'll show you the lantern, that's, you know, if there's any questions about how that's calculated, but.
Okay.
Um, and then other, other than that, I have a lantern that we're presenting, which is this as a uh, it was a large screenshot, but that's the top of the lantern, you know, the six-foot-high post as we get on the driveway. So it's more of a downlight as was requested by the board, so.
And all right, um, Amy, then I'll start on the board with you, and I do see we have one Q and A from an uh person in the audience. We will get to the people in the audience after the board has done their initial comments. So go ahead, Amy.
I'm, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a situation in which the property has the effect of either being undisclosed or disclosed. And I appreciate that the uh designer and the architect and the owner is are both, all three are trying very hard to produce a lighting scheme whereby people around them, but also people that are passing uh through the, the um water region of their uh building are trying to be minimized. And I guess I would like to understand how they thought through what they were doing and the extent to which the globe in the light as it is recessed, but it's not fully recessed. And as a consequence, it's still going to serve as a beacon. And um, I was just wondering whether or not they had done any assessment of the, the sort of circumfront- frontal area that that light was going to reflect out.
Well, these lights, I believe, are about fifty feet apart. So as you're walking down, if you were walking down the driveway to the property at night, it's we're not looking at as a, you know, going from one look, one post through the dark to see the other, it's kind of meant to light the driveway a little bit. We don't, I mean, though, that's a little bit of a frosted globe, but the light bulb based on the proportions of this, you can hardly see the actual bulb itself. So the globe comes down, but that is not a, you know, the light bulb. So it, we, we would like a little dispersment, not just a, a straight downlight on a spot. Um.
And I, and I completely appreciate the challenge that you have because it's one that is present all the time and a situation like we have to address. So I'm wondering whether or not if the shield around the light was only, it appears, you know, I'm sure in inappropriately small, but if the light bulb itself was interior raised so that the, 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 the bottom of the light is not present, then it would give you a create a shadow without having something that is like a, an uh piercing eye. Uh, and I, and the only reason why I know this is because I have house, I have lights like that. And I live in a neighborhood where we constantly struggle to figure out, how do we create dimensionally the shielding on the light? So that the light's projection is maximized, but not with this little bead at its uh edge.
Um, I, I, I just don't see this as being that detrimental. Um, I know what you're asking, but I, it, you know, we weren't looking to just do a straight, like a can light shining straight down. So I, I think this is accomplishes what you're looking to do. I don't see that, that, that light bulb is probably not coming down a half of an inch inside of that fixture. There's a little bit of a glow on the glass perhaps, but the light bulb itself is recessed up into the fixture. Just going by this, this photograph of the item Mr. Callahan had chosen, so.
I leave it to my colleagues to comment.
I, I know what you're asking, and I.
Incredibly accommodating, so it's not that I feel any resistance at all.
Okay, well, thank you.
Really about, you know, there are bulbs that actually have very rounded bases. This one has a, it's not completely round. It's a kind of pointed at the end.
Right.
And it, for, you know, for, for the most part, what you want light to do is to allow people to get from place A want place B. In our case, we have people across from you and people from other directions.
Right.
And piercing light is something that is disturbing.
Understood. Also, they make bulbs where the actual tip of the bulb is, is shielded so that the bulb goes up into the fixture. So perhaps we can look into that, but this was our, you know, our first choice of having something to that we felt would accommodate the board, so.
Certainly, the physical feature of it is, is a very nice design. It's, it's just, if we can accommodate just a small additional constraint, uh, it would, it could have a very big impact for people.
Okay, and we could look into something, you know, modified of this version, that's all. I know what you're saying, and I appreciate where you're coming from, so. Um, that's fine. Well, like I said, we're trying to accommodate so we can get through and get on with our project, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Hey, anybody else on the board?
Yeah, just to follow up on, on Amy's comment on the, on the light fixture, since I've been staring at it for two minutes now. I can look at it. I think um having an opaque bottom of your um, of your lamp might make sense and, and also uh what Amy has said in the past, but, but didn't this time is the, the type of lamping. The actual bulb itself can make a big difference. Um, a bright white uh LED that's a hundred watts is, is, can be blinding. Uh, a warm um, uh, uh ten watt LED could be very nice and create an ambiance. It just, it just depends. And, you know, I, I live in the woods and, and I've got a neighbor who decided to put a spotlight in, and it's gotta be two hundred feet away. And it, I, I, I can't believe it shines all the way to my, to my property so that um, whenever I look over there, my sense of night vision is, is, is uh is altered, and I don't like it. So, I mean, I think, I agree with Amy. It's a perfectly nice fixture. It just looks like it doesn't cut off. Um, uh, and could be seen from a great distance. So if you did have a bulb that had an opaque bottom and that the fixture, um, you know, the bell itself were, were to um act as a cutoff and just shine basically down, but you wouldn't actually see the bulb from the, the way when you're driving by. Uh, I think that would be, I think that would be adequate.
Okay.
Uh, just to be clear, hey, Dick, do you think that the glass we're seeing, that, that's a globe? That's not the bulb?
Correct, correct.
The bulb is inside of that, and it's hard to tell from, from this shot, but I, it, it looks.
Yeah, it looks like a glass dome thing.
Yeah. I uh, but I, I hear you. I, I don't have any problem with uh, whether it's a, a, a different type of bulb or a shield.
Yeah, the quality of the light, though, makes a big difference, whether it's a warm bulb or a cold one and what the actual wattage is. Um, you know, presumably you want it to look nice and um, it, in it, and make sure that if somebody's walking up your driveway, you can see him at night, that kind of thing. The, the trick or treaters, they want to be able to find your house, get the good candy.
I think your point is well taken, that we don't want to be disrupting any other, you know, uh, neighbors or whatever, so. I think we'll uh we'll, we'll look for something along this line, but modified a little bit perhaps. Uh, Mr. Callahan and I will talk about it and maybe we'll uh try one out there.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep.
The right one.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken as to what your expectations are, so we're not gonna.
Yeah, it's not a spotlight. What you've selected looks good, so it's not a spot.
Okay, are we gonna make that a condition?
That the, that the uh, the, the lamping is um.
Opaque.
Has enough, either an opaque bottom or it's a such low and warm wattage that um it looks good.
Okay. All right, uh, Kevin, anything?
Yeah, I um, I, I couldn't see whether there were any um bedrock features on the lot that might already be daylighted and that may be impacted by the proposed um changes. I was wondering if um designer could speak to that.
When you, you mean uh outcrops of granite or something, or?
Yeah, 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 bedrock that's exposed at the surface, that would be impacted by your proposed uh footprint um expansion uh connect and connectivity that you're proposing um, or, or not.
No, I, I, I think everything's pretty flat rate in that area. I know surrounding off the lot there are, but not, not right there, not coming down the driveway.
Yeah, so I can answer that one maybe a little better. So we've been doing some site work, you know, over the years, we came down the road. There are definitely outcroppings in the area. But I don't expect any, uh, we've already run a water service into the barn. And we, 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 I'll, I'll say lucked out. We didn't, we didn't find anything. Um, but I, I don't, there, there's some boulders sticking out of the lawns in areas uh, to the south of this barn a little bit. There's, there's an outcropping between, it's actually pretty close to the lot line between the neighboring house. But uh, keep our fingers crossed. And the, and the addition is just a uh four-foot frost wall and slab. So, you know, we're not going very deep for the foundation.
And there was a patio feature on that as well. I, I um, so I guess all things considered, there aren't any um daylighted ledge or outcrops that would be um obscured or uh covered in any way based on what you have in front of us here.
No.
Okay, now I didn't have any other points. And just to the point with regard to the feature, you know, one thing that you could look on the lighting feature would be for a dark skies compliant um fixture, you know, that, that would go the distance to eliminate. Um, not just vertical glare, glare to the dark sky, you know, it's above, but also that horizontal glare that you get when um, something is not properly sheathed and the light um element actually has some horizontal exposure to create a glare to someone approaching as a pedestrian or as, as in a car. Um, typically a, a fixture that is dark skies compliant is not just compliant to uh eliminate glare to the, to the to the, to the sky, but also horizontal uh trespass of lights as well. Inappropriate um wattages for the um housing. So something to consider and something maybe um uh, we should entertain just to keep it simple in our um approval that we would consider.
Um, thanks. All right, I, I have no questions. Um, let's go to the public. Um, Ted Lubitz, do you want to be promoted? Um, he has a question uh in writing, but um, why don't you promote him, Sandra?
I have offered to promote him. Um, also Amy did have her hand raised earlier.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't see it with the screen share. Um.
I just wanted to comment that this has been the most judicial discussion that I've been a part of regarding the impact of light in areas which are predominantly dark in their entire day and their entire night. And I would like us as planning board members to think about, how can we convert conversations like this into some policy frame so that we can provide better and more detailed uh um statements about what really works and what uh can be improved? Because we don't often have the time to talk about something like this. And therefore, we don't create standards so that somebody doesn't go around and around before we get to the point. So I want to commend the uh applicant for being willing to go with us about this. And I think it's just in, it's instructive for us as a board about how to formal, formula, for formulate um s- forms and, and strategies that are both positive for the applicant and also moves our uh standards forward.
Well, one of the things we need to think about is, again, you know, putting these things we ask for into you know, something concrete to by law or regulation that we can continue to ask, you know, have the legal basis to ask for it going forward. So feel free to write something if you'd like to suggest something, so for the future. Um, I, but I agree. I think, you know, particularly with lighting, we've talked about these things, and we, we should have some really hard standards um to apply. All right, is Mr. Lubitz with us now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Thanks for promoting me, uh, Mr. Chairman. Just uh some quick questions and uh thank you, Mr. Callahan, for the presentation.
I'll give it to yourself and your address, please.
Uh, Ted Lubitz, one oh three Border Street. Uh, first off, I, I really commend the applicant for maintaining the uh, sort of historic nature of the building and working within its confines. Um, just a couple of questions. I wasn't aware that the property was actually subdivided. Uh, so I was curious when that happened, and then also interested to hear more about the material um decisions. It looks like the addition is going to be a different material and different color than the historic barn. Um, and then wondering where the property is um in the permitting process with the ZBA and CONCOM. Um, and also just had a general question. Is this a sort of gut renovation? Or is it um with the expansion of the addition, or is it a brand new sort of tear down and then rebuild to, to look like the existing structure?
Uh, okay, I'll try to remember all those. I'll stop from the, from the last one. It's, it's a renovation. The existing structure all remains. Uh, with the exception of the greenhouse is being dismantled and will come off, but the footprint will remain. So as Dick uh showed earlier with the plan, really the addition is a garage and I will call it an attached. So as Dick, uh, showed early with the plan, really the addition is a garage and I will call it an attached. The the entrance attached between the garage and the and the, the front of the barn, which. I'll call the front Black Horse Lane side. Um. So colors have not been finalized. But, um, you know, completely all new windows, the siding will probably be, you know, a hardy. Product, uh, and trim will be AZAC. Uh, we plan on at some asphalt and metal. Standing seam. Yeah, that's, that's probably a better look, Dick.
And and if I may, I I did the barn red so we could see where the main house was, the barn. The greenhouse is now that section coming out on the right. And the addition of the garage and the breezeway, I left them different colors just so we knew what we were talking about.
Okay, so that is not a depiction of colors.
No, no, we're not. We just now we have to sit down as that. Plan, you know, doing that. We want it to look subtle and look like it's been there for two hundred years.
Okay, that's very helpful.
As much as everybody else does, you know.
Help helpful to understand.
I'm an old soul and Mister Callahan is too, so it's not, you know, gonna be a pink elephant, uh, by any means, so. Um, but that's that's our goal.
On the color materials and also a a generally familiar with the large home review, but I'm I'm not sure if. Their design standard of the planning board has control or subjective, subject suggestive control over materials, but. Um, I'm not familiar with any house on the Gulf River or in Cohasset that has already siding. So I might, um. Recommend that you pursue a wood clapper or per shingle product there, uh, to keep with historic nature of that building. Um, and then also if, uh, if there could be a condition put on with respect to the eagle, uh, on the exterior of the barn facing the Gulf River. I know that that is, um, sort of the iconic element of that barn structure, and I did see it in some of your elevations, but. Um, I know that those can change. Um, but I I do think that's just an important piece of that building if it can be ma- maintained at all. Um, I think that'll go a long way to.
That is our intent. Yeah, the intent is to put it back. We, we haven't taken it down yet, so we're hoping it's in. Repairable and, uh, condition and such that, you know, we can make it look good and put it back.
Yeah, no, and and I understand the intent, um, and I just might ask the board to, um. Sort of codify that with a condition. And then the other questions are where where in the ZBA and Concom process are you? And, um, and then also, when was the property subdivided into these lots? I know it's been up for discussion for a while, but. Wasn't sure that it actually happened.
It was an A N R that started a year ago. And it was in, correct me if I'm wrong, Carol, and it was in litigation and we recently settled it. I don't know, a few months ago.
And conservation was probably, wasn't it like six weeks ago?
Yeah, we're we're through conservation, a lot of conditions, and yeah, uh, we've got, um. We're we're good with them.
Good, well, I I know it's been a long road for you, so. Looking forward to, uh, seeing someone like this get moving.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public that has a comment wishes to be heard?
Yes, Mister McGoldrick, uh, would like to be heard.
Uh, good evening, Mister Chair. George McGold at one oh seven Border Street. I'm not in a butter because I'm three hundred and one feet away from the property. But I do look out every night at the Red Barn. And also eighty and ninety Black Horse Lane. Um, so I, as Ted said, I do appreciate, uh. What Steve has done and by keeping the facade on the riverside. Uh, so not only do we get to appreciate it and all the people that access the river, but now that the. Everybody that jumps off the bridge gets to appreciate and thinks it's the oldest building and one of the most iconic buildings in town, so. Uh, appreciate that they're leaving the waterside view as it is. Um. I also would ask, uh, for the eagle to be remain. I don't know how that can be done in a condition through this board. Um, but the other thing I would ask for is that no additional decking or. Structures be built on that side. And again, I obviously am biased because I'm looking right at it. But I'm not just the only one that appreciates and and, um, and I think that. I know the architect and I think Mister Callahan via what they've proposed to you appreciate what it. This building is for the town. I I will say that years ago, uh, the Gulf River Association tried to see if this building could be placed on the historic district. Um, and he, we were told that because it's not i- on the historic register. And we were told because it's not in a historic district, it could not be, but it's an eighteen seventies structure. It's a beautiful building and, uh, I'm again, I appreciate what they're doing and just hope that. What they're doing, the next owner and the owner after that can leave it as it is, because as we know. Uh, Mister Callahan, Mister Rock would have great intention for this, but once they sell it. Somebody could come in and do something radically different without board approval, such as spotlights. On the house, tearing down the eagle. So again, not that familiar with large home review, what kind of conditions you can place on it, but. If you could do things that keep the iconic view from the river and everybody else. That that would be awesome. Um. No doubt that I'm biased because I'm looking right at it.
No, I think we can deal with the lighting ones because that's one of the correct things that we do under the bylaw, uh. The preserving the eagles is stretched, but if nobody objects to it, we'll put it in as a condition.
And then. Putting on my, uh, now now the not in a butter, but from the Gulf River Association President. Uh, we are fighting. Every year about trying to maintain the health of the river and we've been. It's been a a tough battle. We've been losing it. Uh, the majority of pollution. That has come down the river has been, uh, from North Citrate because they're not sewed. Uh, but we are, we have spent a lot of money on studies of the issues and a lot of it does come from fertilizer. Uh, and impervious surfaces that have been created. So if there's a way that we could, um. The driveway, I could, I, it's a new driveway. It's all impervious. If that could be a pervious surface, that would help with runoff. Um, and help with the health of the river, that would be appreciated. And as the board, uh. Agreed with us on the, uh, other project up Black Horse Lane in terms of. Uh, respecting and not using chemical fertilizers, which. By the way, the bylaw, but when it's nice when it's in the deed, because then it gives someone teeth to go after the homeowners. If it's just. Uh, the bylaws, there's nobody. Uh, that's actually going up and down the river testing it. So if that could be applied to the project as well, again. Not sure if that's within large house review or planning or wherever it is. Uh, just know the two things from a, from a health of the river standpoint, um, would be awesome.
Let me ask you this. Did anybody go to the Concom meetings and talk to them about impervious materials? Because that usually falls under their purview.
Yeah, again, um, I have a disagreement with the town about whether I'm in a butter or not. Because I looked at engineering plans based on property lines and I'm within three, I'm three two hundred and ninety seven feet away. They use some application that does circles. And they said I just I fell outside the circle, so I was not aware that they were at conservation. Um, we've been. We had a great relationship with conservation as a Gulf River Association. We've asked them, um, because we we're not an owner. But we're the missionaries to try to keep the river healthy. We've asked them to keep us apprised of of situations, but. Unfortunately, we did not, we were not aware of that. I'm kind of surprised because I'm looking at the plans and there's a number of. New construction within the fifty feet, which I can't believe, I don't understand how that was approved, but that's not for this meeting. In any event, um. No, so that's. Uh, we missed our opportunity, it sounds like on that. So if there's any way within the large plan review, they can ask the owner, um. To be cooperative and help with the health of the river by making it a p- a pervious surface instead of impervious. And also the fertilizer issue, which I think you can do in a large house review. That would be awesome. Uh, thank you.
Uh, George, I can, uh, answer on a couple of fronts. Um, so we had, you know, we did extensive. Uh, discussions, uh, with Concom on the pervious impervious. And, uh, long story short, at the end of the day, we agreed to, uh, a mitigation plan. Which is going to create a, um, a wetlands planting edge. Uh, almost the whole length of the wall. Uh, on this, this elevation we're looking at. Uh, all, all designed by a wetland scientist. And that was the, um. You know, it it started with. The impervious impervious were actually were were less. There there was a patio that that it got deleted. And the driveway was, we're actually taking up more impervious than we're putting down. Um, with the exception of the cutoff was the little. Driveway turnaround, if you can see it there, the hammerhead, I'll call it, that that will be pavers, pervious pavers.
And did, did Concom talk about fertilizer?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we have the order of conditions and it's already been recorded and. Um, it has everything in there.
Oh, it's prohibiting the use of fertilizers. It's prohibiting the use of fertilizers?
Yes.
Alright, anybody else have any questions?
Thank, thank, Mister Chairman, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mister Callie, Mister Rock. Appreciate what you've done for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else that anybody has, um, I'll entertain a motion. Conditions that you've heard that we need to have added. Would like to make the motion?
Make the motion.
To.
Uh, abide, uh, to recognize and accept. The conditions that have been specified in this discussion regarding the adjustments made to bring the. The, this, the plan into conformance with, uh, Cohasset bylaw.
If I may refine that, it's we're approving this under large home review. The condition, let's be specific, the lighting is going to be using opaque. Um, light fixtures. Be no spotlights. The eagle will be preserved on the facade. Um, facing the Gulf River. Uh, the by, the. Area does allow us to get into siding material and I don't know if the board. There's a strong feeling about that one way or the other.
You know, I I think, um, it's well within the homeowner's purview to determine their exterior and the best way to fit it. And also how they want to maintain it. I'd rather have a hardy board that looks better after twenty years. Than have a cedar board that looks like garbage after nineteen. You know, if if. Uh, I'm not sure it's even within our. If we've, if we've done that before. I think it is a good point and there are certainly preferences, but there's also maintenance issues. Uh, and it's not to say hardy board, um, can't be done in an appealing way with the right trim and right colors and, um. At the right scale.
Okay. Alright, so those are the conditions about lighting and the, uh, eagle being preserved. And I I guess, I don't, we don't need it as a condition, but it goes without saying that the Concom. Conditions regarding fertilizer and the plantings need to be. That doesn't have to be in ours, so. Uh, that's Amy's motion as amended, um, any second.
You did a good job, Tom. I appreciate your amendments.
Unless there's further discussion, roll call, all in favor.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin High and I.
Good luck with your project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Alright, good night. Alright, next we have minutes to approve from April twenty second, twenty twenty four. Can I have a?
Motion to approve.
Twenty seconds. All second, uh, all in favor.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin High and I.
Okay, thank you, um. Cassandra, Carolyn, anything that you need to bring up?
The only thing I was going to mention, um, in regards to the MBTA compliance and town meeting, um, is that I just received word. That EO HLC is ready to give us their feedback, so I'm going to be meeting with them. Um, either Friday or Monday. I just shot them off some meeting times, so I will hopefully be able to. Give everybody an answer as to what their feedback is. Very shortly before town meeting.
Good, good. Alright, um.
Uh, can I ask? Just one question, which is town meeting is coming up. Do we know who will be present?
What do you mean, who will be present?
Well, who as the planning board will be able to be present. Uh, when we.
Alright, well, I'm hoping, I I just got a text from.
Wait, wait, can move your hand, please.
About coordinating with me about this, but I'm I'm guessing. You know, we're articles sixteen through twenty two. I guess it's going to be later in the evening. I'm hoping for speed. I'm really hoping that none of the other boards need to get up and speak. Because everything that's been put forward has been approved unanimously by the five boards that have reviewed it, and I'd like to just. Hopefully say that in one fell swoop. But, you know, if other boards want to get up and speak, fine. I don't think we will need the planning board to speak. I'd be up there presenting them as. Chair of the bylaw committee, but, you know, also chair of this board. I I think in the interest of time, uh, particularly since there's two articles following us that may. Engender some discussion and debate. You know, we we want to get through these as expeditiously as we can. Um, when you were trying to get on and you said, let's repeat what we were talking about. I had started by mentioning that for the first time, somebody came up to me at, on the parade on Monday and said. Was hearing rumblings about opposition to the MBTA one, you know, well, no, we can do it, we can do it, you know. So we may have to deal with that. And then there was one. A butter to the proposed district that was looking for inclusion to the district. I don't know if he's going to show up with an amendment. But that would be something, um, that would be opposed. Um, you know, the presentations will be similar, you know, the graphics and the. Text of the bylaws will be available. The graphics will be similar to what was at the presentation at Wilkett Commons the other day. Um, you know, hopefully this will all be short and sweet, that that we won't have. Any opposition. We haven't heard of any opposition, either on one, four, three postings or.
But if, but if each, eh, any planning board member has comments that would support the approach. Taking and the townsman taking with the MBTA, there certainly no, would be no reason not to.
No, not at all. I'm just, I think, I'm just saying we need to play it by your. Yeah, no, I'm just saying we need to play it by ears to where we are in the night and how long it's going, you know. You you remember last fall, we were at eleven o'clock and, you know, it was, nobody wanted.
It could be a long night. This, what is there, twenty five?
There's twenty five articles and the ones that follow us are the open space committees. Um. Uh, water bottle ban and then the citizen, I think the noise one is, uh, the noise control ordinance is behind us. I think it's twenty four articles, not mistaken, but the town hall and the citizen petition, I assume those, those are still going. Are in front of us, and so they may take up a lot of the time, so. You know, I I, again, I'm not trying to put a muzzle on anybody, but I just want to. Be respectful of everybody's time and. And, you know, last, last fall, we were, you know, I personally, I was drained having to get up there at eleven o'clock at night and, but.
Sure.
You know, what will happen is even though we've heard no. You know, what will happen is even though we've heard no opposition to anything so far, you know, that people, somebody will crawl out of the woodwork. Or it'll come up with something.
Yeah, people who don't know anything about what we're talking about.
Right, and you know, so I'll I'll be prepared for that, but you know.
Used to be a guy that would say, I don't know anything about this article, but I think blah, 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 blah.
No, I know, and you know, and and.
It's it's a great privilege and a right to be able to do that, but it does.
I haven't, I haven't been shy about my criticism of people not showing up for things on my comments on one, four, three. I mean, I I don't.
Just don't say that at the at the.
Of course, I'm not going to say it at town meeting, but I'm gonna, I'm just, you you know, but. I'm I'm preparing that somebody will come up, get up and say something.
So since I have my hand up, I I wanna, I wanna congratulate the planning board. For the enormous effort involved in getting us. To the point where we actually might have a new bylaw that regulates and. Encourages the development of our town, and I can only say that there are, uh, at least two and, uh, what there was. A third person, but they, I think, were driving and needed to step off, that you have done a fabulous job. It's been so much work. You have cared so much. And maybe because we've gone back and forth about items that neither one of us wanted to do one more time. I think we've done an incredible job as a public board, seeking to make Cohasset. A wonderful place as it is now, but to allow it to be a great place in the next twenty years. So I appreciate enormously what you've done.
I appreciate that. Will be honest with you that I was disappointed with our board's public hearing process with respect to the FAR article, but it will come forward in the fall. The fall right now is looking at probably another. I would say five to seven articles to finish it up.
And you're you are incredibly generous.
For Monday instead of what's coming.
Anyway. All right, if there's nothing else to discuss, we, I guess, Sandra has shared, the next agenda has a couple of things. But then the one after that, the meeting after that. We don't have anything yet, so we might be able to go with a lighter schedule over the course of the summer.
That's correct. You don't have any, uh, so you have two applications for the fifth. You have, uh, twenty six thirty two Lambert's Lane. For the common driveway and then one forty nine King Street for the site plan review. You do not currently have anything scheduled for June twenty sixth.
Yeah, on on the Lambert's Lane one, is that the one we've been dealing with before that's had issues with blasting and stuff?
Yes.
Is that, is that conforming to the new common driveway regulations?
So, uh, your common driveway standards document has not been updated. Um, in regards to the new bylaw definition. Um, so Pat Brennan has done a review. I just received it this evening. I'm going to be sending it out to the.
Well, if it's, if it's more than three lots, it's not complying with the bylaw that's been passed. So I, I haven't looked at it yet, but, you know, we've had controversy with this guy before about the rules, so I'm just. I want to alert everybody to look at it carefully, so.
Uh, I I am closing or, uh, putting my hand down and raising it again. Which is that I think it's really important that we all look through the entire documentation. Of this particular area because it is a complex area, the the topography is complex. The the, uh, adjustments to the landscape have been, uh, complex. There is a very long history. And for us to be useful to the applicant and also to be fair to the town, I think it's important that we all. Uh, look at all of the documentation, including the very extensive work that was done at Concom. And the various other boards. So if you wouldn't mind, Cassandra, can you make a little envelope somewhere on our? Website so that we could have all the aggregated materials about Lambert's Lane? Because this isn't the first piece of property we've dealt with there. We've dealt with several pieces of property and. Some have had really remarkable outcomes, like they got a road that was, uh, um, blacktopped. And some where things are still not certain. We should be mindful of that. This is complicated. It's on a. Waterway, there's a a number of issues that maybe are not completely finished yet with the other boards.
Yes, I will, uh, work to update the website tomorrow with any information that I can get from Charlotte in regards to. Documents that are ongoing, um, particularly with Concom. I will also try to pull some background information from the last application. Regarding this address, um, and then I also have to get Pat's.
And the chair and Carolyn, just if you shoot us an email too about just reminding us when the. New common by a common driveway rules went into effect.
Yeah, because.
Uh, we passed those that, if I'm not mistaken, that was a fall town meeting. And everything except the free solar station has been approved from the fall, I believe. Believe the AG has approved everything.
Right.
Except the free solar stations or whatever that was, but, all right, so with that said, I hope to see everybody. Strong planning board turnout for Monday night.
Tom, will Judge Cutler be at the, um, at town meeting like she was at the fall?
No, she will not. She got me Monday night.
Oh, you're great.
Good, thank you, Carolyn.
I totally accept that.
We will be fine, um.
Tom, do you want, um, like, just in case, do you want an agenda posted for planning board for Monday evening?
You can. I don't think we're gonna need to vote on anything.
I don't think you do, but.
Yeah, just.
Better to have it than not.
Fine, that's fine. I can do that. You can do the same for the bylaw committee for what it's worth. I don't know who's left on it anymore. Um, all right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, so move.
All right, let's call in favor.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Good night, see you Monday.
That's it. All right, see you on Monday. Thank you all. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.